Okay, just, Carrie, is it okay to start? We're good, we're good. Oh, okay. Welcome to the August 15, 2020 Village of Sag Harbor Zoning Board of Appeals meeting. Could I have a motion to open the public meeting?
So move.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you. The first order of business is to approve the minutes. I had one, just one little thing. Does anybody have any mistakes or anything on the minutes?
I never got them.
You never got the minutes?
I'm not on the email system yet.
Oh. Should?
Yeah, if I can come in, I can probably email them to say that.
Do you, do we want to hold on ratifying the minutes? No, okay, because I have a motion to approve, and it's with the changes.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the July 18 meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Now, we will move to old business. First on the agenda is 55 Howard Street. Is there anyone here for 55 Howard Street? Okay, could I have a motion to adjourn 55 Howard Street to the September 12 meeting?
So move.
Second?
A little second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you. Next on the agenda is 45 Hillside Drive West. Is there anyone here?
Yes.
Good day.
Thank you. And you're, you're their attorney, correct?
Yeah.
Yes.
Great. So we received the updated survey which shows planting along the sort of northwest property line where we had requested planting to be. So I, do any board members have any comments about?
No, I'm fine with it.
I'm okay.
Okay. Is there anyone from the public that want, would like to speak to 45 Hillside Drive West? No? Okay, could I have a motion to close the public hearing on 45 Hillside?
I'll make a motion to close this application.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great. So could I have a motion for Liz to write?
Make a motion for our attorney to make a written decision for this approval.
Including a condition that the planting be Correct. installed per the survey.
Planting, as per recent August drawing, be considered with the written decision.
Could I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you very much.
Just a quick question, how long will that take, the written decision, do you think, or?
It'll be for the next, I'll have it for the next meeting.
Okay, and is an appearance required for the next meeting on my behalf, or?
No.
Okay.
No, we just read the decision and we've approved it, so it'll just be an approval vote.
Okay, thank you so much.
Great, thank you. Next on the agenda is 80 High Street.
I've heard from this application, there was last representative, is not representing them now, so maybe we'll just table it and see here.
Okay. Could I have a motion to table 80 High Street to the September 12 meeting?
I'll make that motion.
Second?
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, great, thank you. Okay, next up on the agenda is 133 Main Street. Is there anyone here to speak to 133 Main Street? Well, they haven't gone through, that secret isn't finished.
Yeah, addition report, I have to get it ready though, from Kathy Aspin, that it would be considered a change too, which means no further formal review is required.
Okay.
She discussed the issue in the memo to the board, which would indicate that you can continue your review of the actual variance application.
So, but we, can we make a decision?
Yes.
Oh, okay, so we'll just, do I need to table this, or just?
I think she, Carrie suggested a second call until the end of the meeting.
Okay, so we'll just, but do I need to make a motion to do that? Okay. Okay, so we'll set this aside for a second call. Okay, next on the agenda is 46 Terry Drive. Is there anyone here to speak to 46 Terry Drive?
Yes, Walter Oden, I'm on the Zoom.
Thank you. So at the last meeting, I think we needed a determination of the location of the pool equipment.
Yes, and we provided a survey to that effect. We're asking for four point eight feet of relief. We don't believe the pool equipment will extend that far, but we, we have it set at 10 foot five inches, where 15 feet were required on that west side of the property. And it conforms to what the, the gas tanks that are on that side and, as well.
Great. Did that get noticed for that?
Yes.
Yes, it did.
Okay, great. So, how do people feel about this now? So we have the front yard variance, and we have a variance for a pool in a front yard, and then we have the
That's screening.
Screen, side yard. The pool equipment is listed on here, and then we have the pool equipment listed at 10.2 feet, where 15 feet is required. So, I'm, I'm fine with this.
Yeah, we had a neighbor who testified last time and was fine with it.
Right, next door neighbor.
Yeah, so I'm fine.
That's right.
I have no objections.
No objections either.
Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak to this application?
Make a motion to approve the application.
Well, first, we have to, could I have a motion to close the public hearing on the application?
Make a motion to close the public hearing on the application.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so now, could I have a motion to approve the application?
Well, you would actually just make a motion to write me to write.
Right, okay.
Right, make a motion for our attorney to go to a written decision on the approval.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. Now, we are at 62 Franklin Avenue. Thank you, and Anthony, I don't think you were here last time, correct? Could you state your name and address for the record?
Anthony Verbaugh, 68, New Street.
Can you raise your right hand? Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Great, thank you.
Okay, so, as you know, I wasn't here at the last hearing, the, the main one conflict, but I think that's a lot greater. So I think the issues were that we had a pool house at five feet from the swimming pool. I didn't realize that that required a variance in itself, it would be, it'd just been asking for block coverage. So what we, what we've done is try to come up with a little compromise here. It still requires that back variance, it's been moving the pool house to eight feet from the rear property line. We didn't want to go any closer, we just wanted to create a certain 16-foot issue. And then seven feet to the pool house, to the swimming pool, to make the swimming pool a foot narrower. And we were going to make the pool a foot longer, but I, what I've just learned in the last five minutes is there's an error issue with that. But at any rate, that was one of the, I think we actually wind up with a little bit less block coverage in the scheme than we had in the, in the original scheme.
So, one thing came to light just at the beginning of the meeting, and that is that the building inspector has determined that the interpretation they've been using in the village is incorrect between this, a swimming pool and a building. The code states 10 foot between buildings and a swimming pool, they determine it's a structure. So there is no code for the distance between the swimming pool and the building. So that variance doesn't exist. So that's new, we've been always interpreting it a different way. So I don't know if that changes what you may want to do here.
At that point, I mean, does that mean we can just go back to?
But that's five, five feet.
Five feet, yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, then I'd love to go back to the original five foot, so that would have a wide pool that we made.
I'm sorry, I can't see who's speaking.
Sorry, was that, do you see me now?
And your name, please?
Which is, yeah.
You could state your names and address for the record.
River, Romano, 62 Franklin.
Great, and you were sworn in with the last meeting?
Yeah, I was.
Yes, yes. So, I guess, the only thing that, it sort of becomes a combination of these two plans because the pool equipment on the original survey needed a variance. But now, the building inspector also has made a determination that the code states that accessory buildings can't have basements or cellars, but he's allowing us to have a crawl space. You had to have a crawl space with the pool equipment in it. So, that's not on the original survey, so it's sort of a combination of the two surveys. And I don't know, we could make a conditional decision that they supply a survey that adds all the correct.
Yeah, you need, you need a final survey, all the updated information correct that you want for, as a reply, so we don't want to get me to have to do two surveys.
No, 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 I know that, but can we, can we approve this with that as a condition for them to?
Yes, as long as, well, it depends if Anthony gets to make a survey in time before the next meeting.
Right.
Sure, I don't think I see any.
You have to get the survey before the next meeting, so I can, right, you can direct me to write the decision, then you can lead to adopt it.
Right.
Survey.
Does that sound reasonable?
Yeah, I'd love to, I'd love to give it the extra five feet, appreciate that. And what's the five, if we go back to?
No, 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 we, we
They were the 15, the original?
You haven't, was the, the 14.5 was?
Yeah.
Yes. So, everything.
It fills myself to get this approved.
So, the pool on the original survey is the pool that you want to submit.
Correct.
The pool house can be submitted as it was, but, but you've got to put the, you've got to call that a hatch instead of pool equipment. And the other thing is that you should remove the word basement from the survey. It says hatch to access pool equipment in basement, there's no basement. It's a crawl, just, but have them put crawl space. So, having said all of that, how does the board feel about?
I have no problems.
Yeah, I'm a favor.
I see an issue, but it's a question. Proposed total coverage, 25.5%.
Well, I mean, remember, when we first came here, we're coming here for lock coverage variance. That was all we were looking for, we weren't looking for setback variances that just sort of came up at, at the hearing. So I guess we would still be eating of the, the lock, the original lock coverage variance.
Correct.
Yeah.
Because, Mr. Romano, just to not correct you, but with the circumstances of this required distance and so forth, it still leaves that one request as part of the relief request, so, yeah. I'm fine with the application, other than we acknowledge that's, that's part of the request. And questions in terms of, Mr. Chairman, the access to the basement? If that contributes towards lock coverage, or is the hatch inside the cabana?
No, it's exterior.
Right.
But it's, it's It was probably included because it was on the original.
I don't have that, so I'm just moving.
Oh, you have the whole one?
This is a July 18 survey?
It showed the hatch, it says basement.
Okay.
Yeah.
His is late. All right, then.
All good.
Yeah, it's great. No more questions, I'm, I'm good.
Okay.
Yeah, so you'll be going to the slightly smaller pool house, it's on the second plan?
Yeah, at this point, I
You just, we, what, you just don't want to exceed the noticed
Right.
lock coverage, because then you'll have to renotice.
Yeah, okay, I got that, yeah.
So, you may
Should it be the original notice lock coverage, or the?
Well, that's, that's up to you, because at the moment, both were noticed, so you can, but we need, you need to tell, well, you need to tell us.
Yeah. So we have to go with the original pool house?
Well, if you want us to write a decision, you have to tell us with the number. So you have to tell us the number.
I think, I think what we got to do is we got to talk to Rolfsky, right? Get, get the, get him to put the numbers on, and then we, we give them.
Okay, so we're, we're going to, we're going to adjourn this then. If you don't know the number, we can't have, we can't direct our attorney to write a decision.
The number for the pool house?
No, no, the number for the lock coverage, lock coverage is a variance.
Under what was noticed?
Yeah, but you can't read.
No, no, I won't, I won't be able to until I actually find the survey.
Right.
So they won't get a decision unless we get the survey and the board is okay with the, the number, and it's under what was noticed, and you're comfortable with that, then I can do it.
Right, but it, then we just, we're just waiting till the next meeting to do this, correct?
Well, you're going to, it would be for you to direct me to issue a decision contingent on getting an updated survey for the next meeting.
Okay.
Yeah. And if they don't provide you with the updated survey, then it would just be a change.
Okay. So, do you guys have anything else? Now, is there anyone from the public that would like to speak to 62 Franklin Avenue? No? Okay. Could I have a motion to close?
Make a motion to close the public hearing on 62 Franklin Avenue.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great, so could I have a motion to direct our attorney to write a decision contingent on receiving the appropriate survey?
So move.
Correct lock coverage?
A little second, I think him.
I, so, so move, all right.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great. Thank you.
Washington.
Okay, now, we are on to new business, and we're at 369 Madison Street. Is there anyone to speak to 369 Madison? Can you raise your?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear your name.
My name is Joan Woodsma, W O D S M A.
Thank you.
And can you give her your address for the record?
30 Togi Trail, East 10th and York, 1197.
Thank you.
And do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
So, yeah.
Great, thank you.
We're here seeking variance to be for a major, a short gate, which is approximately 10 and a half feet over the coast, which allows for the gate itself is only six feet, is elevated six inches from shore. The Sarders engaged the company, which many of us have, all relied on their, relied on their expertise to tell them that this would be okay. They went through the process, the building inspector noticed the gate as a violation, and sent them a violation. They eventually went back to the gate company, said, well, Southampton's fine with it, we're done. So the reason why the Sarders actually elected to go with a gate that was six foot high, and didn't consult the zoning code, was actually to see, Mrs. Sardner is here by herself frequently, and, and unfortunately, we all know, Sag Harbor is a less than, not quite the sleepy little place they used to be. And they saw the enhanced security of the six foot high gate, and that's why they also had a patch around the property and others such like that. The gate itself actually maintains an almost 60% opacity, so it's very light in color, very light in its appearance. And also, another mitigation factor, the, uh, the twin shield to propose, would be to change the color from stark white to a charcoal gray, or a matte black, or something so it would blend in a little bit more. If I could go over the tests for variance briefly. One, is, does this actually introduce an undesirable change to the neighborhood? Well, within a 200-yard radius of this property, I found there were seven properties that actually have fencing well in excess of 6 feet, all around the front yards, rear yards, side yards, corner lots, and such like that. And conceiving, I noticed at 156 Madison Street, there is a six and a half foot high solid white gate that's still there, has been for years. Regardless, at the nature of the neighborhood, and being three houses away, the town would actually miss out answer where this would be set. Is there a feasible alternative, is the setting? For safety, we would argue that there really is not a feasible alternative, other than a six-foot gate, unless you wanted to have a cottage property. This gate provides the security that families desperately require, that needs to be able to maintain and feel that they're safe and they're on home. Is this a substantial variance? With the 59% opacity to the gate, and the fact that there are many other fences in the area that are in excess of this, you don't really feel there's a feasible alternative to address the security measures that the family is seeking to obtain by the standards. Does this have an impact with physical environment condition? I don't think a driveway gate is qualified as having an impact on the physical condition that you might allow it. And is this self-created hardship? Again, yes and no answer. The zoning code was not consulted, so, however, they did rely on the expertise of the contractor that they hired to assure them that this would be all right. So, sure, it is not a self-created hardship.
Just so you know, it, it's, I don't remember us giving any variances for fence heights in front yards, ever. Do, Tim? No, it's not something this board has done. If you see fences that are in excess of this in front yards, they're illegal fences, they're not approved by the village. So those are not, they're, they're not something we could consider as precedent. I don't know what the, the board members feel. One thing I think of is, if you go back to the character of the neighborhood, the one negative thing about everybody having hedges and gates like this is it becomes Southampton, not Sag Harbor, because Sag Harbor is a village where you have front yards that people see into, it's not suburbia. So it does change the character of the neighborhood if everybody was to do this, so.
Well, we'd, we'd be setting a precedent. There's no reason, the arguments that, that you made while, while intentioned, there's no reason that anybody could make those same, same arguments, and suddenly, we have a new code that reads, in effect, because of precedent, six feet rather than four feet. That would need to be something that our trustees would need to change the law, I don't think it's something that, that we should do here.
I, I concur that the six-foot fence, it seems to me, in terms of precedent, have been all gates that, in most instances, have been motorized. And people have just elected to circumvent the zoning board. And the question is, would we have given okay at the time, if it was presented for us to give you a variance? We never had the opportunity, so this is the difficulties that I see.
To that point, the owners were not aware that it would require a variance, I, I understand.
Val, do you have a name?
I think to add to what him had just pointed out, this begs the question, if the application came to the board as a 6.6-foot fence where four feet is required, what would the board have said for the additional 2.6 feet in height? You raised some good findings, Mr. Woodsma, in terms of the distance of this house, in terms of the outskirts of the village, and that the gate has 59% opacity, but I wonder what, if any precedent would be set for more of these to occur.
And just so the board knows, because I know there are new members on the board, we already have one exactly like this, that's been turned a number of times. So it's, it's, it's an ongoing.
I would just add, the house right next door to this one has a four-foot gate. I'd also add, and perhaps it's irrelevant, but there's not a big crime where, out here. And if you think a six-foot gate versus a four-foot gate means you're living in Fort Knox, I think that's silly.
Want so much to know, but a bigger ignorance, do you?
Come on, you climb over the gate, you go through the hedge, but, but, but the fact is, there's not violent crime out here, especially in Sag Harbor. You're addressing a need that doesn't seem to exist.
Wow.
Oh, I, I do.
One thing that
25 or 30 years I've been reading it.
One thing, just, you know, one thing that we can consider, which you come back to us with, is what the cost would be to adjust the fence to a legal height, because that's something that we can take into consideration.
Yes.
It's a hardship.
It's a hardship, so you may want to consider doing that arithmetic, getting us a quote as to what it would cost to mitigate this.
I welcome the opportunity.
But what, we asked for that previously.
No, not on this case, that was the other case.
That was a case, sorry.
Yeah.
So if I could request to adjourn to actually figure out what the cost involved would be?
Let's see if there are, are there any comments from the public? Carrie, anybody? No?
No.
No, okay. Um, anything else, any other questions?
No.
Okay, great, so could I have a motion to adjourn 39, 369 Madison Street to the September 12 meeting?
I'll make a motion. I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, great, thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
Great. Next on the agenda is, is 5 Green Street. Great, could you state your name and address for the record?
Sure, my name is Katie Frank, I'm from Creighton, DC, she's at 5 Green Street.
Great, and you're insurance?
Not yet.
Okay, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Great, thank you.
Good evening, board, as it says, my name is Katie Frank, Creighton, DC, representing the owner of 5 Green Street. She purchased the property back in 2019, when she purchased
She purchased the property back in two thousand nineteen. When she purchased the property, it had this jerk in head roof. I think it's also known as a as a hip roof. We believe it is how that type of roof to try to be compliant with the existing pyramid wall at the time, but the effects of that aesthetically have created a front facade, a roof line that is not in keeping with the careful neighborhood. And our client would like to have a house that's in we live in front of the ARB. We received overwhelming support for this application. Really hope that you approve our application. And so just to briefly go through the the five balancing factors of first, whether an undesirable change may be due to the character of the neighborhood. For the reasons I expressed earlier, the ARB offers support to applications. Excuse me, no other houses in the neighborhood. So we're proposing to change to a fully gable, which is more in keeping. Whether the benefit thought could be achieved by some other method, we don't believe so. It's either a modification to the roof, which would require a variance or or achievement for leaving it at this. Whether it's substantial, it's a hundred fifteen point one four feet of moderate small relief request. Whether there's adverse impacts on the physical or environmental conditions, we're not speaking to improve footprint or change in the other conditions on the premises. So we don't think that sorry, adverse effect would be created. And whether it was self created, we don't believe it was our time purchase of the property in two thousand nineteen.
Great. So is this the applicant that applied to do the the modifications to the house previously or is this is that the previous owner?
Um, so Roxanne Taylor is the current owner. She has applied for prior variances for this for this house and they were granted. I think that was in twenty twenty one. And then we went in from the ARB and last month we went from the ARB again for modification to be approved. And now we're here seeking a variance just for the modification to the front roof.
Right. Do we know where there were there pyramid variances previously granted? Do we know?
I do have a copy of the
And what the existing pyramid variance?
Well, that's what I that's what I'm asking. Because we did create variant relief already.
Have you had any? Have we received any letters from the neighbors?
We received one letter at work. Yeah, you guys got that.
So it was a volume of eight hundred twenty six cubic feet.
For the side, yes, but nothing for the front.
No.
Does it say there what the existing?
No. It probably does on the trip works, but not not here.
Just because it's probably a huge pyramid variance.
Already, yeah. Although we did grant them eight hundred twenty six cubic feet additional pyramid variance.
Okay.
So it's still under thousand. What is it? Still under a thousand.
I think it's worth mentioning that there's a sixteen foot driveway in front of the house. So if you're standing at pavement and you're looking at the house, it appears as if the front yard is much larger than it actually is. It would not be obvious that it would be here. That's perfectly aligned. There is a line drawn from the edge.
I did. I I think it looks much better and it's not a huge addition.
I'm out of variance.
What does what does everybody think?
I agree. Think that the this is a strange condition, which is forced by the and as you pointed out, it's not consistent with the architecture in the neighborhood. So it's a small variance and I feel comfortable with the application.
Yeah, I'm in favor of granting.
I also.
Great.
Me too.
Oh, great. Thank you. Is there anyone from the other than the letter that we received? Anyone from the public that would like to speak to five Green Street? No? Carrie, no, the um, no? Okay. Great. All right. So could I have a motion to close the public hearing in five Green Street?
So move.
Second.
Second.
Great. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So could I have a motion to direct our attorney to write a decision in favor of the application?
So move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you very much. Okay, next we have fifteen Bluff Point Lane. Good evening. Could you state your name and address for the record? Raise your right hand. You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth? Great, thank you.
Okay, so fifteen Bluff Point Lane is it's a little cottage, one and a half story cottage on the water. The property is pretty decent sized property at fifteen thousand square feet. It's full headed on the water side. There's a little dock going after the boat. You know, a lot of these in these houses, when these little cottages on the water comes before for the approval boards, it's usually tearing tearing it down, building a modern house in their place. This is not that kind of project. Really, all the owners are
Hello? You got muted.
Dan here.
Can you hear now?
Yeah.
Okay, so maybe you need to repeat yours because they all go at it once.
Did you hear anything, Barbara?
Yes, I got um this is not that kind of project. All the owner is looking to do and then it cut out.
Yeah, okay. All we're looking to do here is to add two point four additions to door additions and a small addition to the existing deck. And no swimming pool. We don't need to. The house is high enough that we don't need to raise it for FEMA compliance or anything. It's really a pretty straightforward project. What we do need the variances for here are specifically rear yard variances, and that's because being on the waterfront the part of the house is the rear yard. And the additions, so we need the variances. I think I did the power coded plan there, which I would say we need the variances for the both additions and the front door. I would say that the the additions are both setback from the existing front plane of the house. That's what's where they are positioned. Larger the two additions is to be back from the front facade of the house, the smaller additions will be back. For doors, of course, also set back from the existing front point of the house. You know, this is going to be obviously this is the first step of what's going to be a long process. We also have to give harbor committee. We have to do E C non jurisdiction. This is just the first step and essentially it's
I I'm fine with everything. I think that, you know, the setbacks from the street are still twenty feet, which is what they would be in historic district. The additions on the side, on one side, you're very far away from the property line of the neighbor. On the other side, there's a frame shed there and a lot of screening. So even that you know, places gives a lot of privacy.
Yeah, and I I think it's a refreshingly modest addition to the house, which also provides a lot of use for the owners.
I'm in I'm in favor of granting a variance.
It basically doesn't change the character of the house. It's small and I mean, just asking to increase the size of the bedroom. So I have no objection.
I will add to those comments.
Great. Is there anyone from the public to speak to fifteen Bluff Point Lane? No? Okay, could I have a motion to close the public hearing on fifteen Bloodpoint Lane?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second?
I'll second.
Great. Could I have a motion to write our attorney to write a decision for fifteen Bloodpoint Lane approval?
That's just so the board's aware this is the fifth decision, so I may not I may not be able to complete like this decision within the next thirty days, but I do have sixty two days of
Right.
sixty two days to adopt the decision. So, you know, if necessary, I'll try and make the effort there. And also it will be conditioned that, of course, I'm getting every other
Right, right.
And and obviously, if any of those other boards, you know, do not approve of what's been approved, but this will
Right. So could I have someone make a motion to
I'll make a motion.
Have Liz write a decision? Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great, thank you.
Okay.
So it's we can. Can we just add on?
There's a second call.
Oh, there's a second call. I'm sorry. Is there anyone here to speak to one thirty three Main Street? Okay, so could I have a motion to table one thirty three Main Street to the September September twelfth meeting?
So move.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you. And then we have one addition to the agenda, which is we're going to discuss and vote on our our resolution resolution setting procedure for zoning board of appeals. So did everybody have time to read?
Yes.
And does anybody have any comments about any of the seven, no, I'm sorry, nine points of the resolution?
You could take one.
The only thing that I wondered was if under number five, under number four, we've given the applicant ten minutes and then we can give the board can give them additional time. It's sort of a discretion of the board. Under number five for the public, we've given them three minutes, but we don't give them any option for additional time. We have to have we request
We always have discretion to hear.
Even if it's written this way. Okay, so we don't need to do anything about that. So do we need to read these into the record?
It's up to you by adopting it.
Okay, so because it's kind of long.
Yeah.
So could I have a motion to adopt the resolution setting procedure for zoning board of appeals?
So move.
As written.
As written. So move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oh, we didn't ask for any public comment. Should we have public comment?
It's not a hearing.
Yes, not, yeah.
So it's okay. Okay, great.
We make our own rules.
We make our own. Yes, why don't we do that? Yes, we yes, that's a good idea to have it put up on the website so everybody can read it. Anything else? Hey, could I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great, thank you.
Good night.
Thank you.
Bye.
Bye, thank you very
Good evening.
All right, bye bye.
Carrie, what is the next meeting?
September twelfth.
That's two different